...to do a plan, citywide plan regarding our energy with the outcomes to help us leverage grants for electric vehicles, stations, energy efficient appliances, you know, and anything that's associated with energy savings throughout the city, which also includes the citywide LED lights throughout the town. Any comments, questions? CNN?
Resolution 19 authorizes prepare an energy saving plan to award the energy audit agreement to the current company.
Any comments? CNN?
Resolution 20 authorizes a agreement renewal for shared emergency and non-emergency dispatch services between the city and the township of Bay Harbor.
Any comments? CNN?
Resolution 21 authorizes a agreement renewal for shared services for information technology services between the city and the township of Bay Harbor.
Any comments? CNN? I have a question on the way. For resolution number 20 and number 21, how long have we been in shared service with the HDP? Do you have that?
Three years.
Three years?
Three years.
This will be another three years?
And that's just the dispatch service, right?
That's dispatch penalty.
Yeah, okay.
And this will be for another three years?
Yes.
Want to go over the bills?
If there was any one bill paid from the beginning of the year until now, that was for payroll, we haven't been paying any bills until we had approval of a temporary budget. Even though I overextended payroll, I can't not pay our people. We're looking at bills to be approved on page one, the fourth and ninth of Thalia, which was the software approved for abandoned properties and also destruction property for the fourth quarter. There's an annual costing for a number of years. Two from the bottom is the December tax bill, $133,000 to county improvement party. Go to page three. Page one in, this is for the old October field. Park has been worked on down by the old October field, which is draw three, total contract like 3.5, through the table have 1.9 paid off. They expected the thing to be done before spring. You go down to the middle of page, Everbridge, this is again a contract for software used by a police department. Bottom of page five, it is the January payment to school for tax on reflection of revenue of $130,000.
This doesn't have anything to do with this amount of money, but I have the question, who actually determines the amount of money that the city pays to the school district?
It is determined by the county and state. They have a, whatever the state doesn't pay, whatever everything will get behind that is responsible to the other cities, and it's passed on, the cost is passed on to our tax agents. And they do redo analysis, they do from July 1 through June 30th, but it takes and rebuilds month to month for that cost. Plus, in August and February, their debt service is our responsibility also, we pay that in February and in August. Otherwise, every month is going to be $830,000. It's determined by state, county, and school. Go to page six. Page one in, ROK Industries, just some service that we use when we do our tax in tax sale in December. This is an online service where people can bid on delinquent properties. We've been doing it for like five or six years, it's been great. It's alleviated by kind of a crowd crowding in city, what were people usually be bidding on properties, now it's nationwide. We have people from northern, maybe from Vegas bidding on our properties and taking care of the taxes for them. After the tax sale that we did this year, there were only seven properties not sold. Out of about, I believe we had like 900 that were on the tax sale list, all of seven were not sold. And as a result, our tax rate is pretty close to a little over 99% for the year. If you go to page seven, go to Triple R Lighting. This is the annual cost of the tanks for the likes of the Christmas item down. May treat, they take them and sew them, store them, renew them if they've been broken or need to be repaired. And this is what it costs in payment out of the neighborhood improvement program, so it's not really part of the city budget, it comes out of the grant program from the state for neighborhood improvement. And then, one more note that, let me check. Any questions on any of these?
I do, Barry. G, I'm sorry, Nick. ROK Industries, is this the first time that we've, I mean, have they bought up?
The ROK is a software that we use.
Oh, okay.
And ROK puts it out on the web where people can bid on, kind of like eBay type of thing, where you can know you can bid on properties that are delinquents.
Right.
ROK is a software company that provides that information to everybody else.
But some of the companies that you just mentioned, is what I'm asking about, he said in New Orleans and all that, have they been on any of the properties?
They've been on a number of, we have a number of properties that are out of town people, and they're really just investment purchases, with the idea that they will buy property, or buy zines, with the idea that someone down line will redeem it, maybe not them, because they'll get interested in it.
All right, thank you. Good, Nelson.
Yes, I do have a question, Barry. Dan, that we are doing this for outside entities to come here and buy property, what are you doing to make sure that the people of Pleasantville get a chance to build on those properties also?
They, everybody, there's open market. There's open on the web, we have one on the web probably about six weeks, where they can come in and, anybody can bid on, anyone except for me or anyone here, but anyone from Pleasantville, they are touching, Lake City, anyone has the opportunity to bid on.
Okay, but it's up here in enough time so that everyone gets to see it, because I know those people that do that for a living, they look at it all the time, but people in Pleasantville might not.
We start, I believe, the first week in November, and end, I think this year we ended the 20th of December. So there's like six or seven weeks where people have an opportunity. And people, they will publish it, something in a paper that says, "Tax Sale Available", this is where you go for the website, and a list of all the properties that are available. Also, people who are delinquent are given probably two or three notice that this is what's going to happen.
Just to add to that for clarity, we're not, these people or investors or individuals, companies, whoever, that are participating in the sale, they're not buying property. That's not what they're doing.
They're buying the lease.
And there is a three-year process prior to them going forward to pursue any type of foreclosure. So the individual or the entity that owns the property still has, you know, yes, to redeem that lease back from the third party holder. So they're not buying the property. All right, and I just want to add to, where I believe that Mayor Wharton's going, she said investors were coming in and buying the properties, so they're not taking ownership of these properties right away. There's a three-year process regarding that as it relates to foreclosure.
And probably by this time, in a month, we probably had 30% of the property redeemed by the owners or the work companies. And for some reason, work companies just wait till the last minute, but we've had a lot of redemptions in the last month since we did this.
One more, go ahead, Nelson.
Is this an annual thing, like every year you're going to have it from November to December? Is this going to be annual? So did someone know or didn't expect that at all?
First, the second week in November, once our tax collector analyzes all the delinquencies, and then we notice it, we send out to the homeowners, or businesses, or wherever it may be, and then the process starts. And we usually end in the middle, the end of December to close it out, give people plenty of time to redeem what their property should be.
Yes, and just to add, because I hear the concern around the residents or property owners or taxpayers, we do here at City of Pleasantville somehow, we probably have to make it more known to the public, that we have that 36-month program for anybody who is delinquent, that they could apply for and become eligible to go onto a, basically a repayment plan prior to it going into a tax lien. What we've done in the past is, we would have the tax collector assess and see how many of those properties are out there, and at one time we sent out bulk notices to most of the local people, a lot of them happen to be seniors, and we sent those notices out and they applied for the 36-month program and went under that program. So, you know, it's up to you guys too, it's not sufficient to make sure that people are aware of that, but we do have something in place to help those that are struggling.
Madam President, can you make sure that we bring the information to the committee?
That's exactly what I was going to.
And to follow up with what you're saying, Ms. Payton, is that we do have a 98% collection rate in the City of Pleasantville, so we're really doing everything that we can do to keep everybody in their homes, because we don't want anybody to lose their home because...
Actually, Councilwoman, this year it's like 99%.
99%.
I mean, every percent is helpful, because as Mr. Ferrin was talking about yesterday in the budget, that there's something set aside for uncollected taxes, and it's a percentage of your budget. So if you collect 90% of your budget, there's a number we have to put in as to rate. The higher that number is, the less we have to raise for it. With 99%, we'll probably cut, this year we had that line item of 701,000 for 24, hopefully it'll be to 500,000, so that's money you have to rate for taxes.
Any other questions? Comments? Thank you, Ms. Payton. Next we have public inclusion on agenda items only.
Tim Jones, Pleasantville, Pleasantville citizens. I have two questions regarding agenda items. The first item is one. Madam President, could you please explain in as many details as you can, what one really means in terms of dollars and cents?
Well, it's to adjust the salaries of the mayor and Cindy council.
Dollars and cents, numbers, please.
Give me a second. So, for city council that's 20, up to is a range, 22,485, and mayor 53,021.
And what are the current numbers?
I don't have any information.
Well, you don't, that's right, to my understanding, the current salary of councilpersons in the neighborhood, $12,000. So you're talking a $10,000 a year increase in the salaries of city council members. Then that needs to be reflected in a way that the public is aware of it. Now, I don't know what the mayor's salary is, and I don't know how this applies to the mayor. However, this is the action of the city council and not the mayor. This is the shiggy that goes on, that I think we're going to have a problem with going forward. And I want you to make the public aware of what's going on. That's our job as citizens of the community. We're talking a $10,000 a year raise that you want to just go dismiss and not have any public comment or any questions left in the past. The second item I'd like to raise is resolution 17. Could you, who was on the front of the committee, please?
Finance, it's myself, Councilman Davenport, and Calum McRea.
Good. Now, I've heard the gentleman earlier today, he gave like a summary report of the meeting he had, like he had a meeting about this, but I would appreciate it if either of you could tell us one significant thing in that audit report that you have concern about. For example, like, what are the total liabilities of the city? You read the report, you're ready to approve it, you review it, please tell me, show me there's something that you've actually read and understand something about what you read, because I have a concern that people always just pencil-whips up and don't know what they're reading, and so please, you can look for everyone, or you can have even your members, just tell us something about that report. What are the things I could ask, if you just ask? What are the total liabilities and reserves in that part of the report?
How many questions do you have, Mr. Jones?
This is it. I have my time, man. I'm asking this to you.
No, I'm asking how many questions do you have?
This is it, this is my last question.
Okay, we can give that question to the mayor clerk, and then we can answer your question.
No, I am asking of the members of the committee. Like I said, my concern is that people are just saying, "Yes, yes, yes," and not understanding what you're saying yes to. It's been a story problem in the city, and it needs to end. If you cannot answer it, just say you can't answer it.
No, it can't be answered, but if you give me questions to the mayor clerk, you will make sure you'll get your answer.
Well, I mean, I can, anyway, I can get the answer to myself if I get it. I just wanted to, do you have the ability to look it up? If you don't know, you're telling me, you're ready to vote, and you're going to vote on that, and then, then it's sexual, whatever, yes, 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 and you can review it. And I just want to make the public aware, you're ready to say yes and stuff that you have not done your homework on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Anyone else? Anyone else on agenda items only?
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. I don't frequent these parks, but seeing that everyone is getting a salary increase everywhere, all the way up to the state level, it draws my attention, because it's a trend. When we have these things occur, I understand there's inflation and all that, and personally, I think that the mayor should get an increase. I think she only had 47, 40-something thousand salary, business and measured. Finance, been getting salaries all this time, it's due for you, just because you're a part of this whole administration. So I think that it's not unreasonable. As far as the councilpeople, who are the ones making the decisions to have this $10,000 increase, or that amount, similar approximate amount, it draws concern, because, okay, fine, you want to do that? You want to pat yourself on the back, say you're doing a good job? Well, what are we getting for that? Right? So, let's see what we're getting. Do you walk around this city? Do you see what the city looks like in order for you to do that? Does that warrant that increase? Right? When you look at our town and you see this, can any of you recognize this? You can take it if you'd like to pass that along for them to look at. This is our city. This is your city, right? Can you identify this? This is supposed to be a pedestrian walkway. Does there any indication that this is a pedestrian walkway? The bike path. The bike path, right? Here's another part of the bike path. Can you tell? Where's the signage? Now, I, when I asked maybe two years ago, Councilwoman Farmararo said it's the responsibility of the people. You can look, you can look at the tapes or whatever, it was the responsibility of people in that area to take care of the bike path. That's good, Chris, but okay. Then, when I spoke to Councilman Camona afterwards, he said he didn't want to waste the people's money spending it on paint. These are, I'm not making up, this is verbatim. So when we look at that, you're doing that increase, can some of that go to perhaps making a proper fence over there on Old Tilton Road, I believe that is? Because this fence for the basketball court is dilapidated, right? How about the basketball court on Creston Avenue, which has cracks and vegetation going through it? Or how about the Lincoln Green Park, which has been missing a swing and is rusted at the base of the structure for the last two years? So when you say you're going to give yourself an increase, can we get an increase on the beautification of this town, where the children walk, because this is a walking district? Can we have lighting where the high school is, where they leave athletic events, that they can have safely secure at least a bright walkway to lead where they're going from the high school or the middle school? Please, thank you, I implore you, think about the children. Do you want the pictures?
I just want to know, Ms. Payton, with the increase that you're proposing, what is the percentage that they deserve? How much of the raise are in percent?
90%.
80%.
89%.
Okay, people here who work in casinos, okay, they just got their raises, and most of the people got 2%.
2, 3, 4.
Okay, 2% increase. We're a small town, we're struggling trying to pay our bills, trying to keep the city, they got, trying to keep their houses and stuff, and we're giving out 80% raises.
Raises.
To what? When the people out here in your town is not getting that kind of raise, and most of them work in casinos, they don't get that 10% raise. They're getting 2%, which is maybe $1,000 a year. Yours are not 10, but this poor struggling town, just like you were just saying, we get a lot of repairs here. Like, especially on Tilton Road there, with bike path, this, that really needs to be cleaned up, because a lot of times, the fence is broken, the kids can't really play there, you know, basketball, so I just don't understand, I mean, what was the reasoning for this kind of increase? I can see a small increase, maybe 9, 80%. Okay, because we just can't afford it. The City of Pleasantville, the residents here, we can't afford this kind of raise. Thank you.
I'm at the wrong job. I can't do it.
Members of the council, residents and fellow business owners here in Pleasantville, my name is Gerwood Pinkett. I represent Sweet Spot Holdings, where a real estate investment company recently purchased a 21-year management. But today I'm here on the issue that a lot of people are speaking about. And I'm not scared, like some of the other residents, I'm not sure if they know the type of work that council and the mayor get in phone calls 24 hours, around the clock, answering calls, having to deal with accounting, finance, construction management, these things that most professionals that make these type of decisions get paid well into the six figures to do. But, I digress. You guys do the best you can with a little bit, and that $12,000, assuming it hasn't been raised in probably quite a while, and the work is heavy, and it's going to require more of council and the mayor to get it done, so I agree with that. And the other item that I wanted to speak on is the budget. I have a plan with my partners of a real estate investment here in Pleasantville, that can add a substantial line item to the budget in terms of excise taxes for the campus industry, and hopefully, as competition is developed in the coming months, we can put something together, and we can actually do something to add some relief to the taxpayers and to council and the mayor and make Pleasantville beautiful. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah. Thank you, Jose Alcántara, Pleasantville resident. I want to thank you, I was on mayor, you've been doing a pretty good job, and I can see like I knew this meeting, we're getting a raise, it's a lot of work for you, I've seen you try to go everywhere, you try to go to too many places, ease back, it's too much for you. But as far as this raise, this is way too much, because if you do the number, it's, like lady said, 80%, going from 12 to 22, you can't really justify that. And with our town not doing well, you got to watch your budget, and we're just, this is supposed to be, really, working councilmen, it's supposed to be mostly voluntary. It's just the way it is, and if you don't like it, if you want money for it, then, you know...
Get a job.
Get a job, thank you, get a job. This is, this little money is given to you to pay for those out-of-pocket expenses you naturally incur in the process, but when you get to the 22,000 level, you already begin to come to the city's budget, where the city's already hurting, it's hurting a lot. It's embarrassment, so I'm asking you, I'm not Mr. Obelby, you're not in this picture because you're new here, so I can't take on you yet, but everybody else here, you got to, you got to think about it, you know, and just voluntarily, I'd like to see this proposal. I'm not, even though it might be passed, I will take one half of the money coming to me, and give it right back to the city. I'd like to see something like that happen. That would be like, wow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. When the gentleman was here talking about the budget for 2022, he said that the budget was 32 million, and the budget for salary and wages that came out of that was 14 million, that's almost half the budget for the city. Somebody getting paid 20, 21. The other thing I want to say, I know everybody has something to live with, I got to live with it too, but we are, the citizens of Pleasantville, I feel, are in a financial trouble. And last year, our silver went up, our taxes went up, and you gave a 20-year abatement for a housing project, which means we got to cover that too. So, I just feel like you're, this is why the demographic is changing, the high cost of taxes is another reason why you can't get the rate goals that you seek. Pleasantville has the highest tax rate in New Jersey at 5%, and the salary per capita is 21,006. They don't go to that. So, we need a break, like y'all are killing us, unless you just want to lose all your citizens. If you really don't want the town to go up, or to prosper or progress, then you can pay you along in vain. But if what you really are seeking is to improve Pleasantville, improve the school district, get rate goals in here, then you're going to have to do something maybe a little different. You have people that are not even retiring now because the taxes are so high, and you need to come out and let people know who you are, because I'm telling you, they don't know who you are. The people that you know know who you are, but the rest of Pleasantville doesn't even know who their councilpeople are. They don't even know what ward they're voting in. And that's a fact. The other thing is, you need to change your venue for these programs that you have every year. Everything is done in Brooklyn Avenue, of course, because it's Lee's Avenue. And on Tilton Road, you never go back and do anything in the other parts of the wards that you're not getting any attention to, like Lee's Avenue. That playground over there is not getting anything. And it's a huge population back there that's being unaddressed. People are complacent because they feel like you don't care about them. You don't address them, you don't, they don't know who you are, you don't have your pictures up, you don't do things in their community, you just do the same things over and over again. I guess it's beneficial to you guys, but they're not beneficial to Pleasantville. So I'm asking that you consider what I've said, and try to make some changes that are more beneficial for the citizens, as opposed to just how much money people make in Pleasantville. They can come here from somewhere else and get a job, make what they could to make where they live, so they come here and they take that job.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
Yeah, I got some.
The items on me?
Okay.
Linda Carrington, how you doing, constable?
Hello.
How are you? I absolutely believe, um, that you deserve a raise. I do. I absolutely believe that you have a difficult job. But you ran for the position, knowing what it was gonna pay. You knew, you knew the pay, you knew the payout before you took it. Most of us do, when we apply for jobs and we get them, they already can tell us how much we're gonna make. All right, there's a, there's another city, and then maybe you're mimicking this city, I don't know, but Ocean City, um, city council did the same thing. I go to Ocean City every weekend. I ride through the city, you can ask my husband, he goes to it. It's absolutely gorgeous. In the summer, in the winter, when everything is dead, Ocean City still will be good. And I, I often tell my husband, I say, you are, you are the mayor of Pleasantville and I'm the mayor of Ocean City. It hurts my feelings to see that, what I'm just saying, because it's so beautiful. And I like beautiful things, I like for cities to look good. I like for people to come to my city. And when I go to Ocean City every weekend, people are visiting there in the wintertime. So, and not only that, their city council is known by me. Everybody, they, they know who that, I know who their city council members are. I only know you because I've been coming up here talking. I have nothing personal against any one of you. I believe that it could be a difficult job. And when I retire, I'll pose one more position myself. But what I don't understand, what I do understand too is Ocean City has a huge budget. Or they're multi-millionaires. Like, like we have multi-millionaires too, but they have a huge, more than double this. And all of them got increases. And their city is beautiful. If you can make the city match your increase, then I'm with it. If you can make this city look ninety, eighty percent better.
Then you deserve a percent raise.
You deserve it.
Any raise you want.
I'm gonna clap you up. Because when I'm on down streets doing a fighting drill with a whole bunch of children and all the sidewalks is cracked and people are falling, getting all worked on because it's, the sidewalks are so terrible. And the houses that are empty is all blown over. It's, it's, it's ridiculous. So just, just, let me just say this, I'm, I'm gonna let me say it one more time. If you can make this city, the percentage of this city look like your increases, I'm clapping you on.
Good evening. Um, I respect what you do. Mayor Ward, much love, right? I really do, okay? However, a ten thousand dollar raise, at this point in time, is not beneficial for the city. Right? Um, we've been up here before. Out of your own admission, we don't have the money. And we don't have the money. By your own admission. Different projects, we don't have the money. But we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seventy thousand dollars.
Annual.
Right? Now, um, I have a mission. For two days in a row, Pleasantville Board of Education had a two-hour delay. Right?
Yep.
That means that our children and, uh, our parents had to make adjustments to get to school. Okay? Um, we do what we do. We try to make it work. And we do make it work. All right? Now, out of your own admission, we don't have enough money for police officers. Right? Crossing guards were not on duty. All right? On their posts for the past two days.
But Northfield's was.
All right? Now, police officers had to fill in. Okay? I am not allowed to direct traffic. All right? But we found ourselves directing traffic on Linden and Leeds Avenue. I don't know about any other school, but I know what we did. All right? We had a police officer there today. And when I turned around, that police officer was gone. Which meant that the children were crossing the street by themselves. Until one of us stepped in to direct the traffic on Leeds and Linden Avenue. So what is my point? My point is, if you have the money to give yourselves raise, raises, right? Then you have money, right, to hire police officers or crossing guards. These parents, right? They don't care about our children. And I'm telling you, someone is gonna get hit. Because of the negligence of this city in regards to protecting our children. Seventy thousand dollars, I'm sure, will help pay for a piece of a police officer.
Two, three crossing guards.
Three or four crossing guards. We had none on Linden and Leeds for the past two days.
We didn't have one on Broad Street.
But you see fit to give yourselves a ten thousand dollar raise. It's time to start doing things right in this city.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Mike Carbone, um, with Sweet Spot Holdings. I've met my partner Gerwood, my other partner Eric, he's not able to make it tonight. Um, I just came out, uh, we purchased a commercial property about four months ago. And, um, I just wanted to let you know, we're here to contribute to the tax base and, um, you know, help beautify the city a little bit. Um, we moved into eight twenty-one North Main Street. And, uh, we've already started fixing the place up. We're here to benefit the city, hopefully, um, benefit the culture of the city and everything else. So, I just wanted to do a proper introduction to let you know we're here. Uh, I've been service, servicing this city for over close to thirty years now. Plumbing, sewer and drain cleaning, water and sewer, septic work. And, um, you guys have always been good to me. So now it's time for us to give back and hopefully we will all benefit from this.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else on the public?
I am a resident of Pleasantville. And I do agree with some women that I would like to say that I am a member. Cause I work in the public. And I would like to say that I, I own Pleasantville instead of lying and saying that you were filled. Just so I wouldn't get judged. Living in a town that could be so beautiful, even a beautiful building right across the street. And I'm from.
I'm, I'm sorry.
I'm calling it up.
Can you repeat that? Can you repeat what you just said?
I said, there's a beautiful building.
Oh, you said something about. I mean, you said you're from.
No, no, I'm from Pleasantville. But I'm embarrassed to say that I am from Pleasantville.
She says she's from Northfield.
I tell people I'm from Northfield because I'm embarrassed that I live in Pleasantville because of some of the things they don't want, because of the personnel variables who they are. I'm going about, I'm here today to talk about the community and my streets.
Can we get your name, please?
I'm sorry, my name is Michelle Senni. As is in Sam, I, N-N-I. I actually went and met the mayor, uh, just a few months ago at the municipal building in the parking lot there. I live right down the street on Edgeville Avenue. And I just moved there nine months ago. And I was told that there's been complaints of my street being ripped up because of the canals that haven't been dug out. They were dug out when Sandy hit. And now I have debris. I have pictures on my phone of send bags of debris of things that don't belong in my backyard. And I don't have it growing in my backyard. I don't have crabs, tampons, um, eagles, alcohol, uh, stingles and asbestos. I actually have a bag in my backyard right now that I'm gonna say to show you all. Because it hasn't been cleaned up from Sandy back there. So I'm talking to residents that rent there or the people that live there half part-time. I'm a full-timer now. So if I have half a foot of water in my front of my house because the sewers are broken, I don't know why you're getting a raise. I don't know why I have the fear for my car being put on water or my home being put under water. Because the sewer systems, wait, my street is ripped up. And I'm telling you that I'm gonna try to meet a new, I'm gonna use new people who walk our house. I'm going to tell them, if you wanna get raised, help the city first. Help the city first, beautify it, and then ask for a raise. I'm gonna be around that corner to plant new projects. That was all green. Free money. And I suppose to beautify the city, I cannot wait to see it, though, I'm watching it. From my backyard, on my deck, I can see it from my home. But I see what the flooding is doing around. The fence is broken, I mean, this football building, the water's coming over it. Yes, you dug out right down the bottom of my street, I watched it for two weeks when I was digging out. The new person that does build is planning building a football field. When people go there to do events, I'm interested in where it happens, if it's flooded? The cars going on the water? You ever gonna live there? Look around the city first before you build something like that. Helping people around there, A Carter did. They have new sewers. I go to that pizza over there.
Miss Michelle. Get the boots on the ground. It's hard, so.
Sorry, but I'm saying, help the city first, beautify it, and then ask for a raise. Because then more people will come here, I wanna live here and be proud to see that we live in Pleasantville. I hope to do that one day.
Anyone else on the public?
Come on down, it's a community affair.
I'm Martin Moore, eighteen hundred Garfield. I live in Pennsylvania, I'm a senior. First of all, it's changing, we chose to come here. I could stay in Somers Point. And yeah, those folks wanted me to stay because of my son. Because of how, right, it's a perfect only chance, and he was an academic scholar, right? While in elementary school, so was I. There, uh, and then also the fact that he was a young athlete. And wanted to win that two division one championship at Fairfield and Seton House University. The day he's a doctor. My daughter's a teacher. My other daughter, great, is, uh, she works for the state, the subsidy for recovery of the courts. State employee. I would say this here. When we start to look at the city of Pleasantville, there are great opportunities here. But they weren't, then people wouldn't be moving in here like they are. They wouldn't be living right, saying, you came to a house that basically only should have three. They wouldn't turn away on it, saying, behind, you know, buying properties up right in the city. And we don't even get the right, we don't even get the advertisement, right, saying that property is all available.
Right.
David and I could get the government.
That's right.
So then, I am new. I am the vice president, right, saying, of the second, you know, the biggest unit in the state of New Jersey, CWA. I've come out of local ten thirty-eight. Now, let me say this to you. I am not opposed to you having an increase in salary. Unlike the gentleman in the back, right, just saying, who wanted to rub your back, they say if you get twenty-four hour calls, that. I, I can well understand, you know, when they come up with a swoop, you're up, right, just saying, with some nonsense, right, saying, oh, twenty-four hour calls. You get twenty-four hours calls when there's an emergency. Not every day. You know, I can bet you, I can look on your cell phones and see how many regulars call that you got registered in the nation right now. I'll be on the seat for. That report by the fact is saying is that you guys deserve a raise. You deserve a raise. But we are the persons that sit across the table and bargain what that amount should be. They don't give it to us, right, you're saying? Something that you, you put on the table and then you just give it to us. Assets, right, you're saying? Put us into consideration. Because the fact that the man is, right, you're saying? The way that the economy has gone up, the responsibilities, right, you're saying, of the officials, you know, the mayor included, right? Folks deserve a raise. They do. Ten thousand dollars, right? Is not a bargaining chip. You know, you know, ten thousand, that'll break us off. That'll break the budget. And if you can't afford something, right, you're saying? How are you gonna turn around and propose to choose something that we can't pay? The only way that you can pay it, right, you're saying, is by going up on our taxes. So we're gonna suffer. I keep the product, I pay my taxes. I'm here to represent, right, you're saying, all those folks, right, you're saying, we live on Garfields, we live on Frontwood, right, you're saying? We live on Park Avenue. I represent that part of the town. And I'm speaking for them. I know who my council persons are. And my, by my matter of fact, one of them lives down the street, so if I'm gonna touch him, I can't. Right, and I'm telling you, right, you're saying, right now, you know, Victor, right? That we're gonna have this discussion, but we're gonna have it on the block.
I know that's right.
Anyone else on the public? Saying none?
Leading mayor, leading legislature, leading the council. I wanna start off. I know what's going in this town. And who has proud of these people to come? Know what they do, the guy Tim Jones.
That's right.
Who's supposed to be the charge of the Pleasantville Concerned Citizens? Just don't follow me. He's just trying to make a name for himself.
No, he's not.
He's trying to make.
No, he's not, that's a lie.
Can I speak? I didn't interrupt no one else. Please, don't interrupt me.
Well, I'm not a follower.
Well, speak the truth.
It's only fair. It's only fair.
That's right.
And I'm not on the agenda.
Three minutes are up.
But I'll tell you, most of the people in here.
I am not on the agenda.
It's about your rank, what you're talking about.
And I'm getting to. You, you sitting down.
Sit down.
Okay, let's just.
He's a hypocrite, he's still.
On the record. Excuse me, Mr. Calloway, just stick with the agenda.
This is an agenda. The taxpayers pay for the majority of the school budget. I never heard Tim Jones or other teachers go when it's time for them to get raises? And me myself, I don't think they deserve a raise in with the shape the schools are in.
Agenda items.
That's not the teacher's responsibility.
And I never heard you come up and say, we have a year to negotiate.
Okay, can y'all just stop? Can y'all stop? Can y'all please stop? Speak from the back. This is not fair. And we can agree to disagree, but this is not mature.
I never heard you say the taxpayers can't afford that. Why? Cause certain people work for the district and they gonna get a raise. They don't care. It's all hypocritical. But now, you know, people wanna grandstand because they wanna run for city council. That's the hypocrite part. Now the lunatic part. Tim Jones is a man.
I am not on the agenda.
I have a student and a wheelchair.
This is not only an agenda. This is not only an agenda, don't allow it.
I am a concerned president of the presidency.
It's not only an agenda.
As a citizen, I would like to know how this guy is still not.
Why are you allowing him to stand?
After he thought he could get for a handicap child.
That's not.
After you got you that child, we ain't gonna, uh, that's even one of them.
Where's the police?
What you need to do is go right high and shake after you got for getting that child. And leave it. Everyone gonna know what you did to that child. I hate that child.
I'll get a child in here myself.
That's right. Yeah, you're right, you're the citizen there.
I can't answer that.
Public, public.
Public portion goes.
Unframed. Straight cow. Straight cow.
Need to settle their differences.
Open discussion, any, any products, designs? Okay. Close, um, open discussion, motion to close work session. All in favor? Madam clerk? Sunshine, sunshine, I'm staying with you. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. This is a, uh, regular meeting. Yes, please. This is the, um, city council, city of Pleasantville, regular work, work meeting is January seventh. No, regular meeting. Time is currently seven thirty for work. The state, Sunshine State is the street that's been duly advertised on the city's newspapers and performance by the open public, even at otherwise known as the Sunshine Wall. Can you please stand for the invitation, and then you stand for the flag, flag symbol?
Yes, um, before we do the invitation, I'd like to have a moment of silence for Jerome Garrett. Uh, Garrett, having just lost his hairline, a big part of this community. Uh, watched this guy do a lot in the community, so I just like to have a moment of silence for Jerome Garrett.
Thank you.
That is great.
If those who say, "I'm not a voter, I'm a trust test, I'm a trustee of trust test services, I'm a recipient of education for the university of, uh, you know, you're right."
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag, to the United States of America. And to the quality of justice and honoration, I make up, and the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Madam clerk, Davenport?
President.
Davenport.
I hear.
Corona?
President.
Korea?
President.
Barclay?
President.
Overstee?
President.
Thomas?
President.
All in favor? Motion to dis- dissent, reading a previous minutes?
Motion, second.
All in favor? Mayor, any, um, accommodations?
I have not been making.
Right, Madam clerk? Okay, first, on the agenda is ordinance number one, first reading. Fixes the salaries of officials and employees of the city. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second, by Councilman Overstee. Any comments? CNN, roll call? Davenport?
Yes.
Davenport?
No.
Corona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Overstee?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Order is passed for second reading, scheduled for February the fifth. Resolution fourteen, authorizing the tax assessment by petition of appeal or pills for the tax year twenty twenty-four.
Motion, second.
Any questions? CNN? Roll call, please, Davenport?
Yes.
Davenport?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Overstee?
You know, I could get a few little restaurants.
That a comment?
Yes.
Resolution fourteen, creating the current accounting grade budget for year twenty twenty-four. May I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Uh, I did you. Yes.
Davenport?
Yes.
Corona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution fifteen, creating a sewer utility temporary budget for year twenty twenty-four.
Motion.
Motion, Barbara Korea, can I get a second?
Second.
Second, Barbara. Davenport, roll call, please. Yeah, um, Davenport?
Mo, yes.
Davenport?
Yes.
Corona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution sixteen, awarded a contract for the Black Horse Pipe Streetscape Phase One Project to Charles Maradino LLC in the amount of four hundred eight thousand, four hundred sixty-three dollars and zero cents. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Madam clerk? CNN, roll call, please. Davenport?
Yes.
Davenport?
Yes.
Who's sorry, Davenport?
Yes.
Corona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Overstee, which is like the rule of resolution sixteen.
Let me see this. Oh, yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution seventeen, certify that all city council members have reviewed the twenty twenty-two annual audit for the city. May I have a motion, please?
Motion. Second.
Any questions? CNN, roll call, please. Davenport?
Yes.
Davenport?
Yes.
Corona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Overstee?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution eighteen, approve the community energy plan and authorize the application to P B U Community Energy Plan and the implementation grant program. May I have a motion?
Second.
Any questions? CNN, roll call, please. Davenport?